Regular meeting number 38 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Let us pray. God, first of all, we lift before you, Monsignor Cody. We pray for his health and certainly for his speedy recovery. And we want him to know that we love him. We certainly pray for him tonight. Dear God, we pray tonight for peace in our world, that your divine presence would provide comfort and hope to those in need, and resolution would be quickly found in the areas of conflict. Through your grace, we are ever mindful of the peace and prosperity we enjoy as a nation. Please continue to grant us the wisdom and the resolve to find common ground, to solve the many challenges we face, and that we serve as visible instruments of solidarity, collaboration, and cooperation. Lord, we ask your help and guidance as we endeavor, as a governing body, to enact laws that protect and enhance the quality of life for all of our residents, with specific emphasis on the preservation of unspoiled natural areas and clean drinking water. Finally, God, we ask your special protection of your children, particularly those in the first minutes and the months of their lives. Watch over them in these very early, critical periods of their lives, helping guide us in identifying and securing the vital resources and educational tools to assist parents and caretakers, so that all children may have the opportunity to realize and fulfill their unique gifts and purpose. All of this we ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor. Put a call on the floor.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig? President Pro Tem Miller? Councilmember Mills?
I just have one announcement. I just wanted to introduce Chris King, who is an intern, summer intern in my office. Chris, will you please stand up? Just wanted to share with everyone, he is a graduate of Bridgegate, and he's also on the bowling team. He's very interested in green initiatives and been very helpful in my office as it relates to environmental committee, and we're glad to have him, so please give him a warm welcome.[288.77][288.77](Applause).
Councilmember Paley?
Yes, President Ginther, I do have a resolution as well as a few announcements, but for my resolution, I would like to have Katie Zender and any other representatives from HNTB Corporation come forward to the podium. I know there's more than you, Katie, here.[318.27][318.27](Laughter). We have a resolution to recognize and congratulate HNTB Corporation on the occasion of their 100th anniversary. Whereas HNTB Corporation has been providing infrastructure solutions to public clients in the United States for 100 years since its founding in 1914, and currently is the planner, designer, and construction manager for $11 billion of infrastructure annually across the United States. HNTB Corporation leads the way in delivering infrastructure solutions to the city of Columbus in transportation, bridges and structures, traffic and ITS, transit, rail, urban planning, environmental water resources, and construction services. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that we hereby recognize and congratulate the HNTB Corporation on the occasion of their 100th anniversary. Ms. Zender, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate this acknowledgement from council. I just wanted to mention that in the city of Columbus, we have recently designed, as a sub to DLZ, the Main Street Bridge, just to give you some idea. Also, we've done a varsity sports master plan for Ohio State. On the north side, we designed the 270 and 315, and then also 23 interchanges where that's under construction right now on the north side of Columbus. And then, one of our largest pieces of work recently with the city of Columbus is the CTSS, City of Columbus Traffic Signal System upgrades that we've been working on with the city. So, we really appreciate working in the great city of Columbus, and we appreciate this acknowledgement.
Do you want to introduce your guests?
Yes. This is Jerry Mills. He's head of our Transportation Department for HNTB. And this is Sai, and she is, works in our Transportation Group, and she works on the communication plans for the CTSS project.
Thank you. Are there any comments from councilmembers? If not, I move for passage. That's right here.[458.68][458.68](Applause). Just a few other announcements. Tonight, I congratulate Director Chet Christie of Human Resources for his most recent honor. Director Christie is the recipient of the Life Achievement Award from the Columbus CEO Magazine. This recognition is part of the 2014 Human Resources Excellence Awards for 2014. And I agree with what Dan Williamson said in the article in CEO Magazine. This is a tribute to Chet, how much people like working for the city of Columbus. I think for a lot of people, large government might feel impersonal. That is not the case here. Employees here in general feel very at home. We see that by the number of people who want to work and want to stay employed. Chet deserves a lot of the credit. He sets the tone, makes the employees feel cared for, recognized, and receiving training. Congratulations, Director Christie.[537.12][537.12](Applause). I am also announcing the first One Community, One City meeting. I am co-sponsoring, along with the Community Relations Commission, a series of One Community, One City meetings. Collaborations and partnerships are what make our cities successful. These meetings will be a collaboration and partnership to creatively problem solve. The first one will be held this Thursday, July 17, from 6:00 to 7:30. And we are meeting at the New Driving Park Library, located at 1422 Livingston Avenue. Residents are encouraged to attend to discuss ideas that have been successful in their neighborhoods. And we also look forward to discussing activities they may want to plan for in the future. All are invited to attend. For more information, please call 645-1950 or 645-1952. And finally, I want to remind all city employees about our upcoming Family Fund Day on July 27 at the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium and Zumba-Zee Bay. This is the mayor's annual thank you to city employees for all of their hard work and dedication throughout the year. And employees should contact their department Family Fund Day Coordinator to purchase their tickets. That's all I have. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, President Ginther, I have one resolution this evening. It's 0123X-2014. I'm going to ask Esther Gillette and Carmen M. Clutter to walk to the podium, please. And this resolution is to declare August of 2014 to be the Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Columbus. And whereas the residents of the city of Columbus and the state of Ohio are deserving of good health throughout their lives, and whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends exclusive breastfeeding for the first six months of life in order to provide the best possible start to life in all the areas of development, and whereas the health benefits of breastfeeding infants include a reduced risk of obesity later in life, a reduced risk of sudden infant death syndrome, fewer ear and respiratory infections, and a reduced risk of developing both juvenile and type 2 diabetes, and an average increase of six IQ points at age six and a half, and whereas mothers receive benefits that last a lifetime from the exclusive breastfeeding, including a lower body mass index, blood pressure, waist circumference, and LDL cholesterol. And whereas a 2010 study published in Pediatrics found that if 90% of new mothers breastfed, the U.S. would save $13 billion per year in healthcare costs and prevent over 900 deaths. Whereas despite these benefits, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention 2012 Breastfeeding Report found that 62% of Ohio babies are not fed any breast milk, and only 11% of those breastfed babies are breastfed exclusively for six months as recommended. Whereas although Columbus and Franklin County has the highest birth rate in Ohio, resulting in 17,851 live births in 2010, less than 2,000 of those infants were exclusively breastfed for their recommended six months. Whereas the Surgeon General has issued a call to action to support breastfeeding that in part focuses on the essential need for communities to increase societal support for breastfeeding, and whereas the city of Columbus joins the state of Ohio and the Surgeon General of the United States Breastfeeding Committee in the belief that breastfeeding rates will improve if social policy and community norms support breastfeeding mothers and babies. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council, the city of Columbus, this council does hereby declare August of 2014 to be Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Columbus. I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And then Esther, who represents Columbus Public Health, will make some comments. And then Carmen M. Clutter, who was a certified lactation counselor and dietitian, and also works with Moms-to-Be. So Esther, the floor is yours.
Good evening, City Council, President Ginther, Councilwoman Tyson, and other city council members and those in attendance today. My name's Esther Gillette. I'm breastfeeding coordinator and peer supervisor for the Franklin County WIC program of Columbus Public Health. We thank you for the recognition of and in support of the importance of breastfeeding in central Ohio and your sponsorship of the resolution to acknowledge August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Breastfeeding is one of the most highly effective preventative measures a mother can take to protect the health of her infant and herself, yet women face barriers such as lack of knowledge, poor family and social support, lack of availability or awareness of breastfeeding support programs, embarrassment, and work constraints. To reach the goal of exclusive breastfeeding for six months, mothers need to feel protected and supported by their community. We have already made great strides in Columbus to protect, promote, and support breastfeeding, which includes an Ohio law effective in 2005, which gives the mother a right to breastfeed her child in any public setting. Mayor Coleman's executive order adopted in September 2012 to comply with break time for nursing mothers requirement through the U.S. Department of Labor. Community standards on breastfeeding promotion for area hospitals, and an employer pledge for breastfeeding mothers established by the Central Ohio Hospital Council in 2013. Most recently, the Greater Columbus Task Force on Infant Mortality included improving educating women about breastfeeding, which helps reduce infant mortality rates for premature infants, and reduce SIDS by 73% for those babies exclusively breastfed, and 60% by any amount of breast milk. Educating the public, healthcare professionals that work with mothers and babies, and the mother's support system is vital for every baby to have the opportunity to breastfeed or to receive human milk. I look forward to your continued support as we all work together to transform our community into a breastfeeding culture that leads to healthy mothers and babies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Esther. Carmen?
Council President Ginther, Council Chair Tyson, and fellow city council members, thank you for affording me the opportunity to join you today in support of Councilmember Tyson's resolution. As a registered dietitian and a certified lactation counselor with the Ohio State University's Wexner Medical Center Moms-to-Be Program, I wholeheartedly commend Councilmember Tyson, pledge to adopt the month of August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. As mentioned by Councilmember Tyson, the benefits of breastfeeding are immense for both mother and infant. Breastfed infants have a decreased risk of sudden unexpected infant death, type 2 diabetes, obesity, allergies, and respiratory illness. Maternal benefits are just as significant, with links to decreased risk of breast and ovarian cancers, postpartum depression, and cardiovascular disease. Advocacy and support of breastfeeding are crucial to the health and well-being of our mothers and infants. Collaboration between health systems and community agencies to integrate breastfeeding education is necessary to build the health of both our mothers and children. At Moms-to-Be, we work to empower our mothers, providing encouragement and assistance. Throughout pregnancy, our moms take part in education centered not only on breastfeeding benefits, but also the perceived barriers and threats to their success. Additionally, Moms-to-Be employs two certified lactation counselors who actively reach out to all of our moms following birth to offer in-home support and guidance. We leverage partnerships with other healthcare providers and community-based agencies and organizations, such as the Franklin County WIC program, to provide additional support for our mothers and infants. The World Health Organization and the United Nations Children's Fund developed three strategies necessary to increase the number of breastfeeding mothers: promotion, protection, and support. If our goal as a community is to improve and maintain the health and wellness of our neighbors, we must promote breastfeeding as a preferred method for all infants, protect the rights of all mothers who breastfeed through diligent and purposeful legislation, and pledge to support our community organizations like Moms-to-Be to further develop programs that take an active role in supporting the health of new and expecting mothers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you both for coming down and sharing the importance of breastfeeding. And before you leave, Carmen, I want you to just share, because I know that the Moms-to-Be Program just opened at the John Maloney Center, and I want you to share with our listening audience how they can get involved with the Moms-to-Be Program, please.
The Moms-to-Be Program is a prenatal education program geared at providing education regarding maternal infant health, as well as postpartum education centered around goal-setting and job development. We've just opened our, well, we will be opening tomorrow our fourth site location in Columbus at the John Maloney Health Center in South Columbus. And we have a lot of volunteer opportunities available, such as cooking. We offer a meal for all of our participants each week. So we kind of pull on the reins of volunteer chefs to help out. We also recruit volunteers to help out with childcare, to kind of give our moms a break and allow them to partake in the education without having to chase down little ones. And we also accept donations of gently-used or new infant goods to let our moms kind of have the opportunity to have infant belongings that they couldn't otherwise afford.
If you're a pregnant mom, how do you get involved?
If you're a pregnant mom, you can just show up at any one of our four locations. There's no pre-enrollment. You just show up at the door, and you're in good hands. We have a location in Wyland Park that meets on Wednesdays from 11:00 to 1:00. We have a location at Mount Carmel West at their Community Health Resource Center on Thursdays from 11:00 to 1:00. We have our east side site at OSU East Hospital every Thursday from 4:30 to 6:30. And then opening tomorrow is our John Maloney Health Center site every Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:00. Moms can just show up, and they'll get registered at their first time at Moms-to-Be.
All right. Well, thank you both, Esther and Carmen, for coming down again and sharing the benefits of breastfeeding. Thank you so very much. Don't leave.[1253.08][1253.08](Applause).
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any comments from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? This time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda, in the Finance Committee, 1456-2014, and in Public Utilities, 1507-2014. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1469 and 1503-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 1614 and 1615-2014. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1207, 1257, 1259, 1273, 1276, 1277, 1278, 1279, 1280, 1288, 1315, 1334, 1359, 1379, 1392, 1395, 1405, 1408, 1410, 1413, 1414, 1415, 1422, 1423, 1442, 1474, 1496, 1497, 1505, 1514, 1516, 1519, and 1553-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1087, 1494, 1502, 1520, 1576, 1588-2014. Development Committee, ordinance is 1448, 1488, 1492, 1630, 1631, 1632, 1647, 1650-2014. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance is 1376, 1377, 1747, 1748, 1749-2014. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 1546, 1592, 1593, 1604, 1612, 1624, 1644, 1655, and 1657-2014.
Following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 119X-2014. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1202, 1417, 1498, 1562, 1566, 1584, 1594, 1602, 1618, 1634, 1659-2014. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 1499, 1511, 1540, 1573, 1574, 1580, 1583, 1589, and 1613-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1412, 1481, 1493, 1495, 1621, 1658, and 1663-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 1297, 1443, 1452, 1453, 1510, 1622, 1623, Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1000, 1136, 1198, 1241, 1262, 1264, 1304, 1329, 1347, 1407, 1461, 1477, 1479, 1480, 1536, 1567, 1600, and 1660-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1181, 1272, 1323, 1391, 1393, 1436, 1515, 1528, 1537, 1572, 1577, 1579, 1586, 1595, 1617, 1628, 1637, and 1668-2014. Small and Minority Business Development Committee, ordinance is 1487 and 1560-2014. Technology Committee, ordinance is 1346, 1409, 1457, 1460, 1470, 1471, 1476, and 1491-2014. Development Committee, ordinance is 1449, 1450, 1465, 1484, 1485, 1557, 1629, 1633, 1635, 1643, and 1648-2014. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0099, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 107, 112, and 113-2014.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you would make your way to the podium and share your name, address, and the organizations you represent. Sir, you've signed up to speak in support of 1633-2014. You have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, also the chairman of solid vacant and abandonment property in the Flenden area. I just want to ask, city-owned property and landscaping, this and this and that, to be removed or demolished, again, I'm all for it, but we just have to know what happened to city-owned property and also land bank. I just want to share a little story with y'all. Two individuals and I, we took beyond 1592 of moving the weeds from that property, and you know, there was another young lady to work with me, and we decided to move all the brush and the trees and things and stuff like that, and getting the stuff removed from the fence. And because, you know, it was my first time doing something like this, to taking the back of a neighborhood that's overgrown on the fence and everything else, and you know, this money that y'all have for this ordinance of $81,100 can be used for putting some other people to work in the community. And again, I just want to share this with you with my own opportunity, because like I say, the other lady had done this before, and so, like I said again, it's something that's eye-opening, because we don't want to, if there's city-owned property out here, that people should take the time to really cut these weeds or do something with the property to show that they do care. And again, I just want to say thank you. And again, also, you know, I just wanted to say to y'all, thank you for all what you do, you know, for this city, because I know it's a really daunting task that y'all have to do, do the city, and because, you know, it's my time by me looking at things and stuff like that. But again, Michelle Mills and everybody, I just want to say thank you for all that you do, even including Attorney's Office. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for coming down tonight and sharing your thoughts. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? I guess just a point of clarification. Director Shoney, if residents see a city land bank property- Director Shoney, if residents see a city land bank property with high weeds or overgrown brush, what should they do?
The best thing to do, thank you, President Ginther, members of council, the best thing to do is always to call the city's 311 line or to use the My Columbus app. With that, they can snap a picture of the property, geo-tag it, and it goes right into our system, and then they can track our progress on that online.
Thank you, Director. We appreciate Mr. Wilkins, you and your neighbors' willingness to step up, but, you know, wanted to make sure that you and others knew how we could stay on top of this and improve our neighborhoods together through that process. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda this evening? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig. Miller. Mills.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 119A-2014 and 1264-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The first ordinance in finance is 1531-2014. It is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts, supplies, and services for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of previously established universal term and sole-source contracts, and to authorize expenditure of $500,000 from the Fleet Management Fund for the same, to authorize expenditure of $100,000 also from the Fleet Management Fund for emergency vehicle repairs and services, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code only for these emergency repairs, services, and parts, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is one that we do on an annual basis, and so, again, for the parts and services for our fleet division. And then we're asking for a wave of competitive bidding, because there are often our times where we have a repair that we, that's an emergency, and there may not be time to procure such commodities through the city's competitive bidding process. So this ordinance also authorizes the Finance and Management Director to establish contracts and purchase orders in emergency situations only with those vendors necessary to provide the part or repair needed and to waive the competitive bidding of Columbus City Code of Section 329. And again, however, all the best efforts will always be made to identify the appropriate vendors with the necessary skills to provide the needed part or service at the lowest cost to the city. And I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask my colleagues to turn back to page 12, and ordinance number 1456-2012. I move to table this ordinance by voice for one week.
Craig. Miller. Mills.
Abstaining.
Paley. Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. And it's ordinance 1390-2014, excuse me. It is to authorize the Director of Department of Technology on behalf of the Columbus Public Health Department to enter into an annual agreement with Streamline Health to continue providing services for vendor-hosted vital records management system, to waive the competitive bidding provisions for the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $80,098.56 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. The original agreement was authorized in March 17th of 2008. It was most recently renewed by the authority of 1131-2013, which passed June 17th of 2013. And this agreement will provide for services from June 23rd of 2014 through June 22nd of 2015 at a cost of $80,098.56. The Vital Statistics Record Management System is a critical application that provides Columbus Public Health Department with the ability to provide an extensive array of services, electronic data, and document management, partnered with document scanning and operational workflow that provides full end-to-end processing of birth and death records. This electronic foundation fully supports the future of federally legislated electronic verification of vital events and statewide central issuance. This ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding of Columbus City Code in accordance with 329.27, as Streamline Health is the Columbus Public Health Department's vendor that has a unique knowledge of this critical application, making them uniquely capable of completing the work required. And I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. My next ordinance is 1473-2014. It's to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a Child and Family Health Services Grant from the Ohio Department of Health, to authorize the appropriation of $924,822 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Child and Family Health Services Program coordinates services among agencies that provide perinatal services to children and women of childbearing age, including public health nursing services. Columbus Public Health also uses these funds for the Women's Health and Family Planning Center, and this center is, provides direct healthcare services and assistance for clients to gain access to Medicaid, helps ensure that social and emotional needs of pregnant women are met, and helps reduce the rate of smoking among pregnant women and women of childbearing age. And this is important. In 2013, the Public Health Women's Health and Family Planning Center served 574 clients. They had 3,486 encounters. 63% of these encounters were uninsured women. And of that, 45 encounters were to clients who are ineligible for Medicaid. So they play a tremendous role in ensuring that our children have healthy, our children and our clients have healthy outcomes. 94% of our clients were at risk for poor birth outcomes, and 4% were at risk for preterm birth and poor birth outcomes. So this grant is, this money is so important in ensuring that the women in this community are able to be first healthy and then be able to have healthy babies. So we're so excited to be able to receive these dollars from Health and Human Services, and they also help to fund, which we passed earlier in consent, our Healthy Start Program also. And we help parent, our, I'm sorry, it works with our clients in South, residents in South London, the near south, near east, and again focusing on infant clients and perinatal and their families. So we're real excited to get this money to help women in our community. And with that, I will move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Okay, I have ordinance number 1642-2014. It's to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., for the provision of the medical director services, to authorize expenditure of $37,894 from the Health Department Grants Fund and the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to waive the provisions of competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. This contract will provide for physician services for our Women's Health and Family Planning Clinic at Columbus Public Health. And the services to be provided will be oversight of the medical functions of the clinic, clinic services for women seeking prenatal and postpartum care, contraceptive services, and screening and treatment of STDs. And so, former bids were not solicited, and that's why we are waiving competitive bidding for this particular legislation. And I move for passage, and, no. I, no, I'm sorry, I'm not going to move for passage. I'm going to request to table this now for one week. And call for voice vote.
Craig. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. And I'd now like to move to workforce development, and I have, yes, and I have one resolution, and as I'm beginning to read the resolution, I know we have a speaker on this, and so, if Vicki Bowen Hughes will walk towards the podium. It is ordinance 1445-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into agreement with Dress for Success Columbus to provide critical workforce development services, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $20,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. Vicki, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson, President Ginther, all members of city council. Dress for Success Columbus is a nonprofit organization. We work with women who are referred to us by nonprofit partners. Over 124 social service agencies refer women to us who are work-ready. However, they don't have the resources they need to feel confident when they're looking for work. So we meet them and provide free of charge, one-on-one, beginning with interview suiting as well as career center services. And then, once women are employed, they can come back for a week's worth of workplace-appropriate clothing, as well as join our professional women's group, which is an employment retention program. Last year, we had a significant increase in the number of women that we served, and that really, to us, showed that the services are in demand and needed. We also are seeing a tremendous increase in the number of women who secure employment once they start working with our organization. A lot of that is due to our one-on-one approach. Every woman that we work with has a one-on-one experience with a personal shopper, a career counselor, or a career path development experience. So until today, we have, since launching in 2007, we've assisted over 6,000 women in central Ohio, and every single one of those ladies is really worth what we've invested in them, and making sure that they are moving forward for themselves, their family, and our community. I think one of the great ways that we stay engaged with the women after we first meet them is not only can they enjoy, join an employment retention program, but they also can give back. So they can become involved with the mission as a volunteer, as a community advocate speaker. They are some of our most stellar advocates in the community. And seeing these women move forward, secure employment, receive their education, buy their own homes, is truly inspirational, and we cannot do that without your support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki, for coming down, and the women that you served are economically disadvantaged. 96% of the women that your organization works with are surviving at or below the poverty level, and 79% are single mothers with an average of two children. 24% are homeless. So we thank you for the work that you're doing to uplift women and give women an opportunity to be able to continue to provide for themselves and their families, and to help Columbus to continue to be a great city. So thank you for the work that you do each and every day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That move for passage?
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Recreation and Parks Committee, I have ordinance 1490, it's 2014, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with the Ryder Company, Inc., for Alum Creek Trail Airport Drive to Brittany Hills, to authorize the expenditure of $5,417,804.44, with a contingency of $540,000 from a construction inspection fee of $235,000, for a total of $6,192,804.44, from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bonds Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $2,864,804.44 within the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. Passage of this ordinance allows for construction of 1.25 miles of Alum Creek Trail from Airport Drive to Brittany Hills. The segment will include connectivity for the Ohio Dominican University campus, as well as the Brittany Hills community. The central section of the Alum Creek Trail is the final missing piece of a 22-mile-long regional greenway. The gap has prevented users from full use of the trail, and there are no safe walking or cycling alternatives in the surrounding communities. The regional trail has been under development for the past 15 years, and thousands of residents will now gain access to schools, parks, employment, and a busy college campus. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, 1501-2014, to authorize and direct the city auditor to set up a certificate in the amount of $100,000 for various King Arts Complex improvement expenditures for labor, material, and equipment in conjunction with Recreation and Parks facility improvements, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. The King Arts Complex is owned by the City of Columbus. These are expenditures that may include, but are not limited to, items such as concrete work, HVAC, roofing, flooring, et cetera. Contracts will be entered into compliance with the procurement provisions of the City of Columbus Code 329, and will not exceed $20,000 per job. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1548, test 2014, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Reynolds Farm Equipment, Inc., for the purchase of Lastec 4520 Turn mowers, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the City Code, Section 329-27, to authorize the expenditure of $73,000 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, and the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. There is no product that meets the needs of park maintenance as much as Lastec 4520 Turn mower. After demonstrations and product testing of models with similar but not exactly matching specifications, the department determined this mower to be the best-performing machine and the highest value for the quoted price. Director McKnight comments?
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council. This mower has some features. It's a 10-foot widecut zero-turn mower, and it really provides some efficiencies in cutting in close and around, whether it's shelters, playgrounds, trees, picnic tables. So it's a very efficient mower. We've tested a lot of different mowers, bought a couple of these last year, found them to be very beneficial, and the Reynolds Farm Equipment is the sole, through the distribution contract, sole distribution for the state of Ohio, so we have to work through them to acquire these mowers, and we would appreciate your support of this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Director McKnight. We believe that this is efficient use of the public's money. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1605-2014, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant, and enter into grant agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in the amount of $983,320 for the Dicert-run project, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $602,680 within Recreation and Parks Fund 702, to authorize the appropriation of $1,586,000 to the Recreation and Parks Fund, and to... to the Recreation and Parks Fund, and to declare this an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And then finally, 1606-2014, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant, and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in the amount of $173,000 for the Big Walnut Creek Refugee Preservation Project, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $74,000 within the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund 702, to authorize the appropriation of $247,000 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 286, and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight comments.
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, this ordinance, as well as the previous one, are both land-acquisition ordinances on the east side of Columbus. The 1606 is along Big Walnut Creek, near Navasker Park. A portion of this property will be used for future development of bikeway greenways along the Big Walnut corridor as well.
Thank you very much, Director. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. I complete my work in Recreation and Parks.
Councilmember Craig, would you bring forth legislation out of public utilities this evening?
Be happy to. Thank you, sir. In public utilities, we have ordinance 1416-2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a plan modification for the Professional Construction Management Services Agreement with URS Corporation, Ohio, for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer and an expenditure up to $7,700,000 within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2014 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. Director Davies comments.
Councilmember Craig, President Ginther, members of council, as you indicated, this is a plan modification for URS. They are providing all of our construction services, management services, for half a billion dollars in upgrades to our three water plants and the construction of a new up-ground reservoir in Delaware County. This is the sixth modification of nine. Because the sums were so large, we wanted to spread it out and plan accordingly to keep rates stable. So the total work that they'll be doing over, I believe, eight years is roughly $65 million.
Thank you, Director Davies. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1523-2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase a service agreement with Business, Inc., for the repair of a Huffman blower, to authorize the expenditure of $7,000,770 from the Sewer System Operating Fund, to waive competitive bidding provisions for the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director Davies?
Councilmember Craig, in 2013, we established a blanket order to repair and maintain the blowers at the treatment plant. We had a blower repaired that year, and it was less than $20,000. So thinking that future repairs would be falling in that same amount, we set up a blanket order in 2014. When a blower did fail and we sent it for repairs, the cost was over $20,000, so we need to tack on an additional $7,000 to repair the blower, which is already with the company that will be doing the work. So we need to request that the wave, the bid process be waived.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1596-2014, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter four contracts for the option to purchase Moylno pumps parts with Bazizi Pump LLC, West Coast Motor, rotor, West Coast Rotor, Inc., Moylno, Inc., and Liberty Process Equipment, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $4 to establish a contract from the General Fund, to waive formal competitive bidding requirements, and to declare an emergency. Director Davies comments.
Councilmember Craig, we received four bids for a total of 705 pump parts. Each bidder selected different amounts of those pump parts. They didn't build on all 705 of them. So two of the bids were deemed non-responsive by the purchasing office because they attached terms and conditions to the bid. The parts that they did bid on were not bid on by the two responsive bidders, so therefore, when we checked with the purchasing office, they indicated we need to waive competitive bidding to grab the remaining parts that were unbid. Otherwise, we would simply rebid this again. We'd get the same bids back. This company would again put on these terms and conditions. The purchasing office said the terms and conditions are okay, but in order to accept that, we need to waive the bidding. It's very confusing, I know.
Thank you, Director.
It confused me for a long time as well.
Thank you, Director. Any comments or questions from colleagues? Hearing none, move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Now I'd like to direct your attention back to page 20, in consent ordinance 1507-2014. I'd like to request a table, this ordinance, 1507-2014, for one week, and request a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes?
Miller? Mills? Pele? Tyson? President Ginther?
Thank you, President Ginther. I yield the floor back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have 1322-2014, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders with multiple vendors for the purchase of commodities, supplies, and materials for pavement markings, traffic sign upgrades, and traffic signal equipment, per the terms and condition in existing citywide universal term contract, or informal, formal bidding for the Division of Planning and Operations, to authorize the expenditure of $1,210,000 from the Streets and Highways Geo Bonds Fund for this purpose, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1463-2014, to amend the 2014 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriations within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, to authorize a cash transfer within the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to waive the formal bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Essela Incorporated for professional services consulting, to configure Essela software, to authorize the expenditure of up to $500,000 to pay for this project, and to declare an emergency. The waive competitive bid waiver was dealt with, depending on the, there were not enough time to do a formal bidding process. The current in-house-developed software that Public Service is using is obsolete. Contracted to modify a previously-installed software product currently in use by building and zoning services allow the obsolete software to be replaced months earlier than using a bid process, and saves the cost of purchasing new software. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1607-2014, to amend the 2014 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Incorporated to provide for payment of the contract and construction administration inspection services in connection with the resurfacing program, to authorize the expenditure of $2,800,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. And under this contract, it will consist of repairing and resurfacing 10 city streets, and constructing 255 88 curb ramps along with those streets, milling with existing pavement, overlaying with new asphalt concrete, and minor curb replacement. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in Public Service and Transportation Committee. President Ginther, can I move on to small minority business development? In this committee, we have 1486-2014, to authorize the Director of Development to enter to a contract with the Columbus College of Art and Design for the purpose of supporting the Mine Market Incubator Program, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $100,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. And at this time, I'd like to invite the new president of CCAD, Tom White, to the podium for a few words about the mine market. Welcome to council.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, distinguished councilmembers. Thank you for having us here today. As you said, I'm Tom White. I have the honor and privilege of being the new president of CCAD. Thrilled to be here. I'm here to personally thank you for the financial support, and to the city of Columbus, that you've provided to launch at CCAD the Mine Market Incubator Program. In the months ahead, I look forward to meeting each and every one of you, so that we can work together to continue making Columbus a primary destination for education, commerce, and lifestyle. I particularly want to thank Councilmember Miller for sponsoring this funding proposal for the second year. You have helped to make the mine market part of the fabric of Columbus, and the mine market is becoming an important asset for building creative leaders. At CCAD, we believe that business has entered the era of the creative. The financial, legal, and technical voices will always have a critical role and be a critical part of any successful endeavor, but the creative voice has emerged as the engine of innovation and growth. Because of the talent we bring into our doors every day at CCAD, we believe we have a responsibility to those students, to our alumni, the great city of Columbus, the great state of Ohio, and our country overall, to fuel creative leadership in business. Starting this year with my administration, we're putting an even more concentrated focus on the power and capability of the Mine Market Incubator Program, and you'll begin to see your support bear additional fruit. So thank you very much again, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for coming down. One of the things that has been a passion of mine is to make sure that we talk about innovation and small business development, and mine market is a great example, and actually really at the beginning of creating that culture within Columbus and also central Ohio. Any other comments from our fellow councilmembers? If not, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And Mr. Ginther, I would, President Ginther, I'd like to move on to technology. In technology, we have 435-2014, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into a contract with HSHI International Corporation to provide cobalt software maintenance and support services, to waive the competitive bidding provision of the Columbus City Code, and to authorize the expenditure of $37,256 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. And in this competitive bidding waiver, there was not enough time to go through the formal bidding process, because the city needs to renew its Micro Focus cobalt support by July 31st of 2014, to ensure the continued access to technical support services provided by Micro Focus. And with that, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1467-2014, to amend the 2014 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of appropriations and cash between projects in the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter to a contract agreement with Xerox Consultant Company, Incorporated, for the provisioning of a hosted Columbus Human Resources Information System, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $152,547.16 from the auditor's capital improvement bond fund, and $1,637,056.84 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. And under this waiving the competitive bidding, again, this is another where there was not enough time for a formal bidding provision, process. And with this, this will allow for the immediate need to access the city's current use of the CRIS system and attain services for reimplementing the system in a vendor-hosted environment. And with that, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
1468-2014, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter to, into four contracts with Guttenkopf Corporation for the installation of fiber optics cables and related services, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,213,762.52 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. And under this legislation, this will be, under the four contracts, the Fire Station 3 Fiber Project will provide fiber and network services to the new fire station at Green Lawn Avenue that is under construction. Also, the East Franklinton Fiber Project, and this is necessary due to the demolition of Veterans Memorial, and need to continue to provide fiber connectivity to COSI. This also, under this contract, it provides fiber construction for Woodrow Avenue downtown, and provide a device fiber cable path from Municipal Court, and also fiber connectivity to Nationwide Children's Hospital, and fiber to the Fire Station 14. And with this being explained, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And last in technology tonight is 1478-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter to a contract between Competitive Companies Incorporated to provide equipment installation, annual maintenance services, in support of the City of Columbus' camera project, to waive the competitive bidding provision of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $80,648.82 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. And under the bid waiver, this is also, they did not, they do not have enough time for a formal bidding process, but the, there is an immediate need to get the cameras installed into the downtown area in support of public safety during the summer festival season. CCI has demonstrated that their equipment will meet the city's needs, and can be used as, also for Wi-Fi access points in the name of the city to pursue downtown connectivity goals throughout this project. If there are no questions or comments, I move for Councilman, Councilwoman Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. And I would just ask, maybe, I forget who's sitting in the chair for technology, but I certainly, just a question about the bidding. I mean, we've had three pieces of legislation that we waive competitive bidding because of time, and I just want to understand how that happens. Is it going to, I just want, yeah, an explanation of the timing issue.
Deputy Director Bodai?
Yes, President Ginther, Council Chair Miller, members of council. Yes, President Ginther, Council Chair Miller, members of council. The last three pieces of legislation went through a process each individually and not necessarily each being wrapped up due to time constraints. What they were is, if you go back to the other legislation, the three back with the CRIS project, all three, there were three vendors that were evaluated on that process. We looked at what their capabilities were for hosting the software, their ability to deal with all the processes that we have in place today. It's currently being utilized to generate checks electronically for all members, all employees throughout the city. And that evaluation process recommended moving forward with Xerox, and that recommendation was fairly recent, and it went through that process to get this legislation through in a timely matter. The next one with Gutenkoff, that was bid out. We did receive competitive bids. That process went through fairly recently as well, and that's why we have emergency legislation, and it's being processed that way. The last one is where we had a pilot last year. We had the infrastructure in place for the wireless through CCI. We had the tragedy in Boston, at the Boston Marathon. The mayor had a directive to get up some surveillance cameras very quickly for the events that took place during that summer. We utilized that equipment. It performed extremely well. It's still in use today, and it gets very high bandwidth. So, what we did is we moved forward with procurement of that software, that hardware, and the annual maintenance for that.
Thank you for providing that information because it certainly, you know, could be for the viewing and listening audience when you're just saying it's about time that that could be an issue. And so, one I definitely knew about CRIS, and I knew that CRIS was certainly one that with Xerox, we've been working on that for quite some time, and certainly understand about the issue with the cameras from what happened in the Boston Marathon and what we did now, and that we found a vendor that's working with us. And then the last explanation that you gave certainly is one that, that it was bid, and so I appreciate that. So, it wasn't just, so I appreciate that, but when you're saying timing, I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, have a precedent of saying timing. We certainly know in advance when those contracts are going to come up. So, thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Councilmember Miller.
Move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in technology.
Thank you, President Protem Miller. Our final committee this evening is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Development Committee, I have ordinance 1396 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Crimson Cup, Inc., equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term up to five years in consideration of the company's proposed investment of 1.15 million and a creation of 20 new full-time permanent positions. Crimson Cup roasts manufacturers and distributes specialty coffee, and the company was founded in 1991. The president rented a very small 1,200 square foot office and purchased a small blue coffee roaster. After experimenting with several different mixtures of coffee beans and coming up with a great mixture and a few good blends, he began to start his business in supporting other Columbus businesses and other local coffee houses. The business name of Crimson Cup was derived from the ripe red berry of the coffee tree and in honor of Greg's alma mater, Harvard. Today Crimson Cup distributes coffee, tea, sauces, serves, equipment, and to all to other coffee houses and coffee-related items and to customers across 28 states here in Columbus, Ohio. Another example of starting a wonderful company here in our city and the support that's there to continue for growth, now leading to Crimson Cup creating 20 new full-time permanent positions between both project sites and with an estimated annual payroll of approximately 1.05 million and retaining 17 full-time jobs with an annual payroll of approximately $981,000. A few of the customers supported by Crimson Cup includes Mozart's Cafe, Hills Market, Wyland's Market, the Ohio State University Dining Services, Columbus College of Art and Design, Spennelli's Barcelona, and also Franklin Park Conservatory. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I'd like to yield the floor for Councilmember Tyson to bring forth additional legislation within the Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairwoman Mills. This ordinance number 1504-2014. It is to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $6,182,132.97 within the general fund to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $1,527,033.24 in cash from the Special Income Tax Fund to the general fund and to authorize and direct the city auditor to make payments totaling $6,182,132.97 in accordance with the Jobs Growth Initiative program for the, for the 24 active JGI projects for which employers have met the requirements of their JGI agreements and thus are eligible to receive their payments for 2013 and to authorize expenditure of $6,182,132.97 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Director Shoney, would you like to make any comments on this legislation?
Councilmember Paley, President Ginther, members of council, these are incentive payments that are entirely performance-based. The, the payments are to companies that have created jobs, have added payroll, and performed on their incentives, and so this is where we make our annual payments for those incentives.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I'm Councilmember Tyson. So, this is a point of clarification. Thank you. That's okay. With that, um,
I knew I'd said something. I could see the looks on the face. I'm like, what did I say wrong? Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. The legislation, first of all, I would, by voice vote, request to amend to 30-day.
Craig, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And I would also by voice move, waive second reading.
Craig, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson.
Thank you. And now I'd like to move for passage by voice. Oh, who didn't say yes? Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
President Ginther.
Okay. And now I'd like to move for passage by voice.
Craig, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I would like to return the legislation, the Development Committee, to Council Chairwoman Mills.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I also have for consideration tonight ordinance 1506-2014 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $2,159,597.1 within the general fund to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $539,899.25 in cash from the Special Income Tax Fund to the general fund to authorize and direct the payment to Columbus City School District, Hilliard City School District, Olentange Local School District, and the Southwestern City School District for income tax revenue sharing totaling $2,159,597.1 to authorize this expenditure of $2,159,597.1 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. By authority of the ORC Section 5709.82, the city is required to pay affected school districts 50% of the municipal income tax revenue attributable to tax-abated projects where the annual new employee payroll for a project is $1 million or more in a given tax year during the abatement. For tax year 2013, the City of Columbus has a total of 17 projects requiring revenue sharing, and the total amount of revenue to be shared is $2,159,597.1. The 17 projects are located within four different school districts, and the revenue shares include 1.8 million to Columbus City Schools, $19,000 to Hilliard, $285,000 to Olentange Local, $26,000 to the Southwestern City School District for one project. Emergency action is requested in order to expedite payment to the four school districts to compensate them for property tax revenues foregone due to tax abatements. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1558-2014 to amend ordinances 1868-2008 and 1751-2010 to correct authorizing language and to modify job creation agreements regarding a job creation tax credit agreement with Whirlpool Corporation et al. and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all the legislation I have for consideration this evening, but I would like to make one announcement, President Ginther, if you allow me the time. I'd like to announce and share with the community, listening and viewing audience, that Easton Town Center and the Easton Community Foundation will host the Columbus edition of the Real Estate Associate Program, otherwise known as REIT, beginning September 16. This exciting program started in 2007 and was designed to give up-and-coming minority leaders, many of whom who may be already well-known in their fields, an opportunity to make an immediate difference in commercial real estate. Classes will be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays evenings through November. The 11-week REIT course will feature experts from many of the following companies and organizations, CBRE, Steiner and Associates, Equity, Fifth Third Bank, Glimpsher, L Brands, Nationwide Realty, Ohio Capital Corporation, Rockbridge, Wagon Brainer, Urban Land Institute, and a few others. The only requirements for applicants are that they have a bachelor's degree or advanced degree and that they fill out the online application by July 18. Applications are currently being accepted. For more information or to apply, please visit wwwprojectreap.org. This is an opportunity to include more minorities in the world of commercial real estate where there's underrepresentation. I encourage many who are interested to apply. I am familiar with the program in another city, and it is a great opportunity to learn more about commercial real estate and to understand a little bit more about the development, and I would love to see many applications and look forward to REIT beginning its work and looking at the outcomes related to underrepresentation of minorities in the world of commercial real estate. So, I encourage many to apply. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Ginther. I neglected to mention our exciting event this weekend, Jazz and Rib Fest. And Director McKnight, you want to make comments? We're going to be judging ribs.
One of the perks of chairing the Recreation and Parks Committee, Councilman Craig. Jazz and Rib Fest, July 18, 19, and 20, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We've got 22 rib burners coming down. I think we've got a good lineup of jazz and music, and we just encourage the public to come down. Looks like the weather's going to be great. It's going to be a great weekend, and it's a good time for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're excited, and we certainly encourage the public to participate. It's a great time for families and children.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. There's nothing else to come before us this evening for regular meeting number 38. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We will reconvene for, in five minutes, for zoning for regular meeting number 39. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Protem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council. On zonings and variances, we permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. Also, on the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. You may be seated. First in tonight's zoning agenda is 1228, 2014, to rezone 6395 Abbey Trails Drive, being 5.4 plus or minus acres, located on the south side of Abbey Trails Drive, 801 plus or minus feet east of Gender Road from CPD, Commercial Plan Development District, to LAR 12 Limited Apartment Residential District. And first, I would like to take this from the table.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The applicant is M.H. Murphy Development Company. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. This received the Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 1230, 2014, in which I would like to first remove from the table.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. To grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.04, permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 6395 Abbey Trails Drive to permit commercial vehicle access in the required perimeter yard of the LAR 12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is M.H. Murphy Development Company. The proposed use is an apartment complex with commercial vehicle access and reduced perimeter yard. This received the City Department recommendation for approval, and I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 1524, 2014, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 33112.25 Maneuvering, 33112.27 Parking Setback Lines, 3312.49 Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required, 3332.05 Area District Lot Width Requirements, 3332.15, R4 Area District Requirements, 3332.21F Building Lines, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Requirements, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 3332.27 Rear Yard and 3332.28 Side and/or Rear Yard Obstruction of the Columbus City Codes for the properties located at 305 and 307 East Fifth Avenue to permit two mixed-use buildings and one rear single-unit dwelling on two lots with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Connie Klema. The proposed use is two multi-use buildings on two lots and a rear single-unit dwellings with reduced development standards. This received the Italian Village Commission, Area Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to waive second reading.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And lastly, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1544, 2014, to rezone 3386 East Powell Road, being 19.93 plus or minus acres located 810 plus or minus feet south of East Powell Road and 100 plus or minus feet west of Hickory Ridge Court from R Real District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is MPFG LLC and NP Limited Partnership. This proposed use is limited commercial development. It received the Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the city Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to second to wave second reading.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Fifteen fifty-five twenty-fourteen to rezone sixty-one sixty Riverside Drive, being point eight plus or minus acres located eighty-three point five plus or minus feet east of Riverside Drive and six hundred and sixty-nine plus or minus feet south of Martin Road from LC two limited commercial district to CPD, Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Friendship Village of Dublin LLC. The proposed use is housing for the elderly. It received the Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to wave second reading.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Fifteen sixty-one twenty-fourteen to rezone eleven thirty-one Dublin Road, being point seven seven plus or minus acres located on the south side of Dublin Road, one hundred and forty-five plus or minus feet west of Fairview Avenue from C four commercial district to ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is Wayne Garland, Jr. The proposed use is multi-unit residential and office development. It received the Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no question or comments, I'd like to first to wave second reading.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is fifteen sixty-five twenty-fourteen. To grant a variance from the provisions of sections three 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 point one eight building lines, three 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 point two four rear yard, three three one two point two one landscaping and three three one two point two five maneuvering of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eleven thirty-one Dublin Road to permit a reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District for a fourteen-unit apartment and office building. The applicant is Wayne Garland, Jr. The proposed use is a fourteen-unit apartment and office building, and this received the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no question or comments, I'd like to wave second reading.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Miller Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And last on our agenda is fifteen fifty-six twenty-fourteen. To grant a variance from the provisions of sections three 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 two point zero three nine R four residential district, three three one two point two one A landscaping and screening, three three two one point zero five B two vision clearance, three 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 two point two eight five perimeter yard, three 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 point two five five perimeter yard, three three seven two point five four two maximum lot coverage, three three seven two point five four three building lines, three three seven two point five four four maximum floor area and three three seven two point five six five building lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at one sixty King Avenue to permit a forty-eight unit apartment complex with reduced development standards in the R four residential and AR four apartment residential districts. The applicant is JDS Companies. The proposed use is a forty-eight unit complex. This received disapproval from the University Area Commission. This received the University Area Review Board a recommendation for approval and the City Department recommendation for approval. And with this, we do have three speakers, but what we will do in the order, we will have the first, the presentation from the City Department.
Good evening. The requested council variance will allow the site, which is currently developed with a church, to be redeveloped with a forty-eight unit apartment complex in the R four and AR four apartment residential districts. Other variances include reductions to building setback, perimeter yard, landscaping, and vision clearance with increased maximum floor area and maximum lot coverage. The site is located within the boundaries of the university neighborhood's revitalization plan, which is being updated, but currently recommends low-intensity residential use for the property. Similar requests for high-density residential projects have been approved or are being considered in the university's short north and grand view areas. Deviation from the plan's land use recommendation is accepted due to part of the site being zoned in the AR four district, which allows a maximum density of thirty-six point three units per acre, and because the proposed apartment complex is designed to integrate well with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff supports this request because it will not add an incompatible use to the neighborhood and will help provide additional student housing options within close proximity to the university. Therefore, our recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from our council members? Next, I'd like to have the applicant, Councilmember Mills, after the applicant? Okay, great.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shannon.
Chairman Miller. Mike Shannon Crabbrun and James here on behalf of the applicant. Shannon did an excellent job of summarizing staff's support for this proposed student housing project. Our architect, Bhakti Bagna, will also be making a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, that will briefly highlight the twelve-month process that we've gone through to garner not only staff's support, but also the support of the UARB. I would like to briefly summarize a number of major concessions we have made throughout this process, which we feel are significant enough to garner city's council's support for this council variance. Number one issue, density. Our original submission called for seventy-two units with one hundred and seventy-four bedrooms with a floor area ratio of one point oh two. The development before you this evening has reduced the units from seventy-two to forty-eight, the bedrooms from one hundred and seventy-four to one hundred and fifty, and the floor area ratio from one point oh two to point eight six. Initially, because there's two zonings on the property, AR four and R four, we were going to file a rezoning application. However, at the request of the University Area Commission, they asked us to do this as a council variance, so in the event of passage of this ordinance, it would not set a zoning precedent for the university area. So we worked with staff to accommodate their request and did a council variance as opposed to rezoning. From day one, the number one concern we heard, in addition to the student housing, was parking. The current plan requires no parking variance whatsoever. Neighbors were also concerned about having balconies overlooking the streets. They were concerned that aesthetically, these are a problem, not to mention the fact that they can become gathering places for barbecues and things of that nature, so we eliminated the balconies. The original plans called for garden-style entrance to each apartment. Neighbors were concerned likewise that these areas would be neglected and filled with such things as bicycles and trash. To address this concern, all stairways were moved from the outside of the building to inside the units at a significant cost to the developer. Streetscape, the original design did not have any of the entrances fronting on the public streets. At the request of the interested parties, we created exterior entrances along all of the street frontages. We originally had proposed flat roofs that were met the existing thirty-five-foot heights district. However, as part of the UARB's desire to make significant architectural changes to accomplish a Victorian-style architecture, we agreed to very pitched roofs that were in the things that Shannon showed. To accommodate these pitched roofs and maintain the thirty-five-foot height district, at great expense, we agreed to create masonet-style brownstone units with the first floor of the apartments actually lowered five to six feet below grade. And again, this is a very significant cost to the developer. As a consequence, we feel that we have worked in good faith with our neighbors, the University Area Commission, and the UARB and city staff, again earning the support of city staff, including the planning division, and approval from the URB, UARB. We respectfully ask that you support this ten million dollar project, which will enhance not only student housing in the university area, but our neighborhood in general. Thank you very much for your time, and I'd answer questions now or wait till later.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
One of the changes that's been made is that it went from seventy-two units to forty-eight.
That's correct.
Was that a major leap, or did that gradually go into forty-eight units?
It gradually went to the forty-eight units, and Bhakti, in her chronology of events and slideshow, can demonstrate that.
Okay. Councilmember Mills?
Chair Miller, thank you. I had a couple of questions, two things, and I'm not sure if the applicant is the appropriate respondent or if it's staff, so I'll raise a question and ask it. Shannon, if possible, answer the question. Mention in your comments the timeline in terms of updating the plan, and I want to ask the question specifically related to the FAR and the updates of the plan for the area and the timing of this project, and how all that kind of goes together.
Director Shoney is here to speak on behalf of the university plan revision.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, President Ginther, Chairman Miller. The plan processes that we're going through, the research right now on the university area district plan, the staff is putting that together this summer. They've been working on it since the beginning of the year. We anticipate having that plan ready for publication and comment this fall, looking to bring it to council before the end of the year.
And with that being said, this project, the updates have been underway or timeline start of the project, the dates I'm trying to figure out?
So, the first public meeting for the university district plan was September of two thousand and thirteen. We had a second public workshop in February two thousand and fourteen.
And I think the applicant can answer the question of the starting of this project. Is that accurate? Can you answer that? Okay.
The first contact with Susan Keeney was May twenty-eighth, and the first meeting we had was in June, in July, August, and September.
Twenty thirteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to go ahead and...
The architect, Bhakti.
The architect?
I believe it's going to... Introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Bhakti Bagna, and I'm the principal architect with BBCo Design. We began work on this project last June. Since our initial discussions with JDS Companies, our clients, they wanted to design a scheme that was a good fit to the neighborhood. We met with the UAC and participated in neighborhood design meetings, where we got a lot of great feedback, and we paid close attention to it in an attempt to incorporate as many of their needs as possible into the project. This site has two different zoning categories, an AR four to the north and R four along King Avenue. We heard early on from the UAC that they would prefer not to rezone, as would have been the typical process, and work with the site as is and address variances with the council meeting. This did complicate matters for us in design, as each zoning category has its unique set of requirements and restrictions. However, in being sensitive to the UAC request, we configured a scheme that worked with the dual zoning. We presented our preliminary scheme in July to the UAC. This scheme had six walk-up buildings and a parking deck. We had seventy-two units with one hundred and seventy-four beds and sufficient parking for all units. Our FAR was at one point oh two. We refined the scheme over the next few months, adding interest to the building roofline and defining the exterior material palette. The biggest neighborhood concern was parking, so even at this early stage, we made sure that we provided the required parking spaces. Respecting the neighbors' concern about height, we designed a three-story building that worked within the thirty-five-foot height requirement. The FAR was a concern voiced by most, and we were asked to bring it as close to the zero point eight number as possible. At this point in September last year, we presented the scheme to the UARB. Based on all the feedback from the neighbors, the UAC, and the UARB, we changed our approach to the project entirely. We introduced the townhouse building type for the project, not unlike the brownstones that one might see in New York City, with a two-story masonet stacked on a one-story flat. In our meetings and discussions with the UARB, a few design concerns were expressed. Concern about exterior corridors to access the units, which become collection points for bikes, grills, and other stuff. Hence, we have no exterior corridors to access the units. Concern about balconies in the units that would soon house couches and be a source of nuisance to the neighbors. So we decided the entire project with, we designed the entire project with no exterior balconies. Street-facing entrances to the units would be more appropriate for the neighborhood than access from a common corridor, so all units were redesigned with a street-facing entrance. This scheme was well-received by the UARB, as it blended with the neighborhood's Victorian style homes. The scheme we developed by December last year was received, and that received approval by the UARB, has forty-eight units, one hundred and fifty beds, and an FAR of zero point eight six. We are providing one hundred and four parking spaces and are required to provide eighty-seven spaces by code. We have twenty-three two-bedroom units, twenty-three four-bedroom units, and two six-bedroom units at the corner of King and Hunter and King and Highland. This is the scheme we present to you today for your consideration. As I conclude, I'd like to state that it has been a year-long process on the design of this project. We went through several design iterations based on client requirements, community and neighborhood feedback, as well as UAC and UARB comments. It has truly evolved into a development that will be a great addition to the neighborhood, one of the densest in central Ohio, and provide much-needed higher-end housing options to students and young professionals. Thank you.
At this time, we go into our speakers segment. We have three speakers signed up to speak against. Our first speaker will be Alexis Hansen. Welcome to council, Ms. Hansen. Please state your name, and if you represent any organizations, and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Alexis Hansen, and I'm a part of the Dennison Place Neighborhood Association. Good evening, President Ginther and members of the council. My name is Alexis Hansen, and I live at one seventeen King Avenue with my husband. After several years of searching in the neighborhoods surrounding downtown Columbus, we bought our house in Dennison Place two years ago. We love our neighborhood. It has a wonderfully diverse collection of residents, from college undergrads to young professionals and families, to long-term residents who have been a part of Dennison Place for over thirty years. Our neighborhood is a tapestry of cultural, religious, ethnic, and economic backgrounds, and I think that this is something very special and worth preserving. Additionally, many of our neighbors have a strong sense of community and stewardship within the neighborhood. Dennison Place, like many downtown neighborhoods, has fallen upon hard times and suffered neglect and abuse in decades past, but recent decades have seen a rise in concern for what are some of Columbus's oldest and most unique neighborhoods. Residents have been working to rehabilitate our city's historic homes in what I can only describe as a huge labor of love. It is costly, time-consuming work, but we do it because we value the oldest and most well-crafted pieces of architecture in our city. We want to continue the positive momentum and create and maintain a healthy, vibrant community so that what remains of these homes and neighborhoods will last for future generations. In order to be successful in this endeavor, we need responsible development of underutilized spaces in our neighborhoods, with careful consideration of the surrounding environment, architecture, and population. Some who live outside of Dennison Place may assume at first glance that we are merely an extension of South Campus, but in reality, our neighborhood has far more diverse population than the homogeneous blocks of student housing north of King. A building such as the one in question tonight is arguably attractive to undergraduates and is physically out of scale with any of the other residential structure in Dennison Place. It will simply tip our neighborhood's balance too far in the campus direction. This sort of development is irresponsible and reeks of greed at the expense of a really wonderful community. There is too much of this in our city already. Your constituents are asking you to carefully consider the interests of the people who will be living nearby this proposed structure. For us, it is not about profit, but about maintaining the character of our neighborhood in terms of population density, mixed demographic... in terms of population density, mixed demographics, and architecture. We look forward to working with whoever it is that ultimately purchases this property so that we can realize a development of appropriate scale and density, one which attracts a diverse group of residents, not solely undergraduates. Please help us to continue to enhance the Dennison Place neighborhood which your constituents have worked so hard to revitalize. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please, please, as respect to the council, please hold your applause. Our next speaker will be Chris Plume. Welcome to council. Please state your name and address and any organization that you represent, and you have three minutes.
President Ginther, members of council, good evening. My name is Chris Plume and I live at 120 King Avenue with my wife and son, and we are proud to live in the short north neighborhood of Dennison Place, and I support redevelopment of the currently underutilized site, but the current proposal is not the right way to do it. While both our neighborhood and the South Campus area to the north of us are part of the university district, there is a distinct difference between them. We are about one of the half dozen or so owner-occupied residences on King Avenue that surround this site. We count as our neighbors business owners, retirees, young professionals, and students. Dennison has a fine balance of diversity, which is part of what makes it an attractive place to live, and over the past couple decades, millions of dollars have been invested into the neighborhood. In contrast, the South Campus area is very homogeneous with little to no owner occupancy, a lack of neighborhood pride and an appearance that reflects this. There's plenty of rental stock in our neighborhood, but these are in the form of low-density structures. Duplexes and four units are the prevalent type, not large complexes. Again, there's a balance in the housing stock that is good for both the renter and owner. Up to this point, you'd have to venture into the campus area to find something like what has been proposed here. In the larger university district area, city planning staff have long recognized the need for large-scale development in the commercial corridors of Lane Avenue and High Street, and the zoning reflects this. And most of the campus area surrounding these corridors is at a higher density too, allowing for the apartment construction that has been occurring all over. But in the current zoning overlay and in the university development plan under consideration today, King Avenue and the rest of the residential neighborhood of Dennison Place are and recommended to remain at lower density. The current proposal completely flies in the face of this. City planning looks at not only what is there today but what the best options are for the future. By following the master plan that the city supported, there is a widespread development occurring all over the campus area, but this same plan also recognizes the value of stability in the surrounding residential neighborhoods like ours. If this plan has worked so well in the rest of the university district, why would we throw it out when it comes to Dennison Place? As the neighbors of this site, we have a vested interest in its success, and we think that smart redevelopment of the property is key to the continued success of the short north area and Dennison Place. We support this developer's efforts. We want this project to be suitable for a wide range of tenants. Please table this ordinance to allow the stakeholders to regroup and make the adjustments that will lead to both the developer's success and something the neighborhood and the city can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Susan Keeney. Welcome to council. Please state your name, address, and if you represent any organizations, and you have three minutes.
My name is Susan Keeney and I represent the University Area Commission. I also live at 358 King Avenue. Thank you, President Ginther and council members. Before I start, I do want to thank you for all your careful consideration and time. I know that you've received a lot of information from both us and also the constituents, our constituents as well, and we appreciate your careful consideration of that, so. As a commission, we've spent much time on this project. As Mr. Shannon said, it was like since last May that we first made contact. We have spent a tremendous amount of time looking at the project and looking, in addition to that, at the university as a whole, the district as a whole, through our working with city staff on the university plan. This has been a year-long process also and has given us a little perspective on the, much-needed perspective on the neighborhood in terms of how our university area is growing. And I mention this because very often I think the commission is viewed as being anti-development, and we're not that at all. We are taking the time now to do careful, thoughtful planning so that development can really fit in and enhance the community for many years to come. Every neighborhood has strengths and weaknesses. The university district, I think, is a little unique in that one of its conditions is both a strength and a weakness, and that is density. It can go either way with us, and we are the densest neighborhood in the state. So, with that, density has been a very important aspect of consideration in the plan, the university plan. We have talked at great length about areas where that intensity and density could grow so that it takes the pressure off of the more residential neighborhoods, and I think that the initial plan that we have, we have a draft plan for this, kind of shows areas of higher development that will be allowed, and actually, there are developments like that proposed along High Street right now. There has been pretty much unanimous agreement that the King Avenue corridor is to remain what's considered low-intensity development. There's predominantly, there are some commercial and institutional nodes, but it's primarily R4 residential, and city staff is very supportive of that. So, there's a consensus that King Avenue remain in this way. I just want to last make a little mention of process, and that is that in the beginning, we had a very positive meeting with the developer, and they met with us several times, also met with the neighbors, but then the conversation stopped and they shifted more toward the university area review board. The review board does rule on design, and I just want to clarify that they've not been totally approved by the review board. They have, they do not have their certificate of appropriateness. However, the review board did approve their request for variances. They wanted to see the project advance. It was upon that approval that the city staff made their recommendation, and I'm sorry, we're just asking for your consideration of maybe us continuing the conversation with the applicant, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next is our time for, actually, rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair. I would like to say from the outset that the opposition for the last year has conducted itself with great professionalism and great civility, and I think that was on display here this evening. We do not doubt the sincerity of their concerns, yet we must maintain, as we did earlier, that we have made very significant concessions in the area of density. We've made very significant architectural concessions. The process is what the process is. They are correct that in order to get a building permit, we will have to go back to the U A R B for the finishing touches on the architecture to get a certificate of approval, but the U A R B did approve our zoning variances after substantially redesigning our project over a four-month period. Once you get the U A R B approval and go back to the U A C, it's not that they didn't participate in that U A R B process. In fact, the minutes reflect that some of the speakers that spoke here this evening also spoke at the U A R B meetings. But we are cognizant of the fact that there was a new plan being fostered through by the Division of Planning after we filed our application, but I think it speaks volumes that that same Division of Planning, who oversees all of these area plans, did recommend approval of this proposed development. So, although there is a work in process that the director indicated will be done perhaps as soon as the end of this year, it would be unfair to hold us to that standard to the extent we filed several months before that process began, and again, it's not like we were trying to beat the clock on the new plan because we took over a year to work on this and try to work out. And we did incorporate all these things that we mentioned that we've put into cutting the density and getting rid of the balconies and taking the stairs and making them interior and changing the orientation of the doors and the Victorian roof and the masonette and going down to the first floor. All of those things actually came from great ideas from our neighbors, where we had neighborhood sherrets, as well as the U A R B and staff. So, we did not turn a deaf ear to them, and I think Susan would say that was the case. For the reasons previously stated, we think it's a quality development. I'd certainly be willing to listen to any questions the council may have of me at this time.
Mr. Shannon, with the university area commission, and maybe Susan might have to answer this, do they have a separate committee for zoning under the U A C versus the general body?
Yes. They have a subcommittee, a zoning subcommittee is what I would refer to it as, and then they make a recommendation to the full U A C. So, you spend most of your time at the zoning subcommittee, and then once you get a vote there, then you go to the full committee.
Okay. So, but under that subcommittee for zoning, is it a separate recommendation or vote to the general?
Yes, they actually take a separate vote. They too recommend a disapproval, and in the 25 years I've been doing this, I can't recall too many incidents where the full commission overrode what the zoning subcommittee would have...
And I'm just curious, when you're doing presentations with the subcommittee of the zoning...
Right.
Is it a full presentation to the larger group also?
No. It's a full presentation. Well, other members of the commission did come to the meeting, like Pasquale, for example. He's not on the zoning subcommittee, but they would filter in and out. Neighbors would be there, but the full committee, I believe, is upwards of 18 people, maybe more than that, and the zoning subcommittee, I believe, might be seven people.
Right.
And I may be off on my numbers.
Okay. And from your architect's presentation...
Yes, sir.
I think that we came up with seven schemes, I think.
Yes, sir.
What was presented to the university area commission subcommittee, the zoning, did they see the final, or did they see all seven, or did they just see the first one to the seventh one?
No, they saw, I'd want to be sure, I know they saw at least the first three renditions where they went from the large structures, elongated structures, then broke them up and then went...
But did they see the final one?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. They saw the final one where we went to the townhouse concept, eliminated buildings and units and things of that nature.
Okay. Councilmember Mills?
I have a few questions. The first question I have is, I heard in a couple of the speakers' comments in regards to density. 48 units, I didn't get number of beds, I got the breakdown of the bedrooms, the two-bedroom, four-bedroom. Can you give me the bed numbers and also elaborate on density? And is there any concessions that, in terms of the density, that would be further considered?
Yes, it's a multifaceted question. The initial proposal was for 72 units and we're now at 50, the, I'm sorry, 48. The breakdown based on bedrooms is 23 two-bedrooms, 23 four-bedrooms, and two six-bedroom units. That total number of bedrooms is 25 less than what was originally proposed with the 72-unit configuration. In terms of density of the overall project, I think staff put together at the request of councilperson Tyson, something that was included in their staff report that showed density in the university area of a comparable nature. If Shannon could go, thank you. Go back to that slide. And it's important to note that, again, this district, this site is owned AR4 and R4. The AR4 portion would allow 36.3 units to the acre, and it was our intention to rezon the entire site to the AR4 to capture that density requirement. But when the zoning subcommittee made it very clear that they would not entertain a rezoning as they preferred the council variance, we capitulated after meeting with staff and changed our game plan on what to file. So, but I do think this demonstrates, and these are recent projects, I believe, 2011, 2012, and 2013 projects that are density of equal or greater numbers.
So, going back to earlier question that I raised earlier in regards to timeline and the drafted plan and the changes on, do you have any concessions that may have been made that gets closer to what was being asked or what currently is being considered in draft stage, being considered because it's still in draft stage in terms of requirements in the plan, particularly for the F A R?
Well, from day one, our mission with the zoning subcommittee was to get as close to .80 as zero. There were never any discussions with them as we went through the months of June, July, August, and September of trying to reduce it to anything that's in a proposed plan that was never on the table for our discussions. So, we got it from 1.02 down to .86, and the holy grail was the .8, the target.
To answer my, because I was going to ask, how far off are you from what was being the .80, you're at .86?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that was my last question, Chairman Miller.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Miller. I know that in reading a lot of the documents that have come in from the residents, an issue certainly has been around individuals that would possibly be living here and certainly thinking about, you know, I'm assuming people are believing it's young college students and concerned about maybe any of their actions, and so, obviously, you took the balconies off so that you can't have, you know, sofas on the outside on the balcony and those kinds of things, but have you considered a, you know, a lot of apartment owners and have requirements of their residence, ensuring that, you know, no sofas on the lawn, you know, you know, about noise, you know, et cetera? So, have you considered, should this move forward, having, you know, since the property owner certainly would hope to keep their property, I'd hope in an excellent condition, have you thought about those kinds of issues with your tenants should this pass?
As a matter of fact, we have after, and this really occurred after, within the last few weeks, when we saw all the correspondence that was coming into council and...
Could you just come closer to the mic?
This happened within the last few weeks when we saw all the correspondence coming into council and heard concerns expressed about exactly what you're talking about. My clients have prepared an addendum to their standard lease, and I could pass out copies now and refer to it if I could. Mr. Schmidt has developed some very quality developments, and he revisited some of his standard lease provisions and came up with these, this addendum for community rules and regulations for this particular site. I don't want to insult your intelligence, but since other members of the community don't have it in front of them, I'd like to highlight what it says. It says, "It is the responsibility of all residents and our guests to respect the rights of their neighbors, to maintain the integrity of the common areas and provide a clean and safe environment. Under common areas, smoking is not permitted in any enclosed part of the building. Residents and guests must dress appropriately while in common areas of the building, including shirt and shoes are required. Doors to public corridors shall be kept closed at all times except when actual use or ingress or egress. Doors are not to be held or propped up..." Doors are not to be held or propped open in any manner. The sidewalks, entrances, passages, lobbies, and hallways and like portions of the common areas shall not be obstructed or used for any purpose other than for ingress and egress to the property. The common areas and corridors shall not be used for storage or placement of furniture or any other article, including but not limited to welcome mats, plants, boxes, shoes, boots, umbrellas, newspapers, trash, wheelchairs, baby carriages, bicycles, or other personal property."
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
For time's sake, we can read all of these.
Okay.
We can get these, but this is, this is a lot, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Tyson, here.
The key is it does address the common areas, noise, outdoor cooking, porch and patio, signs, trash removal, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and that was, I mean, because that was one of the concerns that certainly has been in some of the documents that we've read. So I thank you for sharing that information.
Yeah, I apologize.
We have questions from Councilmember Craig first, and then Mills.
Thank you very much, Chair Miller. Along the same lines, this whole demographic, demographic issue, counselor, you know, and we have the statement, what provisions do you have to observe the behaviors? Is there an on-site management? Some buildings have an on-site manager or the like, or how would you be able to verify this process?
The actual management office would not be on-site, but there would be an on-site resident manager. Does that make sense? So they have an office right now that manages all of their property, but there would be an on-site resident manager that would monitor this to ensure some forcibility.
Okay, the second question has to do with the price point, because that's a discussion if they're young people, college students and so forth. What's your expectation in terms of rents and fees and all of that? What does that look like?
Our best guesstimate would be in the 650 to 700 per bed. So for the two units, you'd be looking at 1,300 to, two-bedroom units, I'm sorry, you'd be looking at the 1,300 to $1,400 range. And when we talk about student housing, and I think we get visions of animal house, and it's important to note that with the sophomore rule coming into effect, that we're going to have juniors and seniors here. It's our hope that we're going to be able to attract graduate students and professionals from the law school, the hospital, the med school, all which are in close walking distance to this. But I can speak from personal experience that I matured a little bit between the age of 18 and 21, between my freshman and junior year. And that's really the pool of students that we are going to be looking at by the time this project is completed, if it receives favorable consideration by this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Mills?
Thank you for answering the question of enforcement of these rules, because that was one of my questions, that they're there, but the enforcement is where really where the rubber meets the road. My other question is, I noticed the number of bedrooms, and along the same lines as Councilmember Tyson has raised the student body. So when you think of a six-bedroom, you think of, you know, college students, and that's, you know, kind of similar to what you would find in a fraternity house.
Yes, ma'am.
So six bedrooms, and listening to some of the residents and some of their concerns, is there any changes, amendments, or considerations related to those six bedrooms? Because I think that could impact what some of the concerns that the residents are sharing as related to what they envision will happen with the number of units and bedrooms and that type of style of living for younger students.
I'm going to spend some of my client's money, and I think it's a, it makes sense from a council perspective and from a community's perspective to eliminate the six-bedroom units. Obviously, they were created as a function of the UARB process because they're on the corners of each, each end of the development, and they have that spiral-type roof on it. I'm not using the correct architectural term. But we could convert those to a two-bedroom unit and a four-bedroom unit, and it would require an amendment that I could, the wording of which I'd have to work out with Shannon and the clerk, you know, would also require an amendment to the site plan. It would not kick us into the need for any parking variance or substantially affect the floor area ratio. So if that is something that the councilperson would want, I got the nod of the head that I'm authorized to do that.
Shannon, is that the process, and is that correct in terms of the parking?
I'd have to crunch the numbers, but I think they are slightly overparked right now.
Okay. I think there's some room in making those changes that addresses some of what I've heard from the residents, because that style of living, I think, is what they, what I'm hearing from them in the conversations and the communications, that that sort of entices that type of what they fear from, from the number of bedrooms and the units, and that that would reflect the more of a party atmosphere, student living type situation when the bedroom numbers go up and you get a group of students in one space differently than, say, just in a complex altogether.
We would agree to eliminate the two six-bedroom units and replace them with two-bedroom units and two-four-bedroom units.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Because what we'll do is, we'll add that for, when we go through the final process for approval, to make note of that.
Okay, sir.
Okay.
And there was another amendment filed with the clerk, because I'm sure you're.
Right, I mean, okay, okay, okay. Any other questions from councilmembers?
Mr. Chairman.
Council President Gunther?
A couple of questions, and I'm not sure, Mr. Shannon, if you have these answers, or if you could provide these, but the 650 a bed average, how does that match up with the going rate on off-campus residential per bed? Any sense of that? Will this be on the high end? Would it be?
I think this would be on the higher end. I talked with a landlord who has property immediately north of us at Eighth and Highland, and he's at 435 per bedroom. And these would be fully furnished apartments, which contributes to that number. His units were not fully furnished.
I appreciate the applicant's willingness and commitment made here tonight to Councilmember Mills to eliminate the two six-bedroom units, because what we heard consistently from neighbors was a concern not just with reducing the overall number of units, but then creating more of the larger number of bedroom units. But I guess I come back to that 650 a bed and looking at the two-bedroom units being roughly 1,300, 1,400 hours a month range. Because one of the things I talked about with the applicant early on was what type of folks were going to live here and the unmet need in our community, particularly in the short north, but also in downtown, for affordable, safe housing for young professionals. And that really hasn't been talked about tonight, and I don't know if you want to speak to that, or if the applicant would like to, but it's one of the major priorities for both the administration and the council, is to make sure that there are more affordable places for talented, young professionals, our creative class. And so how does that fit into this plan?
It's exactly on target as to part of the motivation for this development. My client does have units in Italian Village, and the price point there is more than some of these young professionals can afford, and they're looking closer to the $700 range, or the combined rate would be $1,400. The price point of the ones in Italian Village are much higher than that. So that's where they first got the notion of the perception that there is a market out there for student or young urban professionals that would be in close proximity to the university area, but would also be a stone's throw away from the short north, Italian Village, and the vibrancy that's going on there right now.
One of the other things raised just before the meeting with Ms. Keeney and gentlemen I met with, I'm blanking on his name right now, who had written me before, Ethan Hansen, Mr. Hansen, so Ms. Keeney and Mr. Hansen I met with just before council this evening. One of the concerns raised was, okay, you make all these commitments to us, but then what happens when these rooms are constructed and bedrooms are configured? How can the folks here tonight know that the commitment that there'll be 25 two-bedroom units and 25 four-bedroom units, there'll be no six-bedroom units? How do they, how can they be ensured that that's what will take place?
Well, actually, they have a bigger hammer than anyplace else in this city, with the exception of German Village, Victorian Village, Italian Village, and the Brewery District, which are historic districts that require certificates of appropriateness. They have the UARB, whom we have to go back in front of and get every detail of our building plans approved before we can get building permits issued. And those will have to be done in strict adherence and compliance to those plans approved by that board, which consists mostly of architects.
I have a question for Ms. Pine. What did you mean by overparked?
I mean that they have more parking spaces than are required by code right now, so that the addition of the two units should not trigger the need for a parking variance.
If there's no other questions, I'm going to summarize and make my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one other point?
Yes.
I'd ask that any amended language be submitted this evening prior to anyone's departure, and that way we can finalize the legislation for signature. So any amendment language that would be, that's been considered and committed to this evening, be submitted to council before departure this evening.
Okay, great. Yeah, that was one of my summary points from the discussion and the changes that we're asking for the applicant to make before they leave tonight, as part of my recommendation for approval. And, okay? And with that, I'm just going to summarize where this process before the rezoning and, to me, as zoning chair, has worked, countless of times, we met with opponents to this, to this piece, and we, I looked at the amount of time that was spent from the applicant and also from the community and their feedback. And one of the points that I wanted to make, and I think the other councilmembers understand, is that when we go through this delicate piece of zoning, not just for this one, but also those in the past, each office has done their research and their investigation thoroughly, not just my office, being the zoning chair. So I'd like to commend my fellow councilmembers in doing that. But one of the things I have, I do have to mention here is that as we go through this process, and we have the community and the applicant have these discussions, sometimes there's a line drawn, and that's what we as council have to decide. Because sometimes we get to the point where the community is asking for everything, and the applicant cannot provide that. So we do have to balance that. And I believe that although this was a, we had a lot of feedback from the community, I really think that there was a balance in getting that feedback, and the applicant making a number of concessions for that. But at a certain point, we do have to come to a vote. And with that, I do recommend passage of this with the stated amendments before they leave tonight to this. So with that, I would like to first ask for approval for waiving of second reading for 1556-2014.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
Next, I would like to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
And last, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig, Miller.
Yes.
Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you very much.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Gunther.
Nothing else to come before zoning this evening? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Sir's second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
We stand adjourned. We'll reconvene for consent, non-agenda speakers momentarily.